Welcome to the City of Douglas Mayor and Commission meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting, May the fourteenth, and we will have our invocation, and Commissioner Taylor will do the introductions. Commissioner Taylor?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
This afternoon, we have Minister Rose Roberts from Hightower Moore Temple. She served on the Ministry's staff at Hightower Moore Temple, and she came to do the invocation for us tonight. If you would, Ms. Rose, you can go to the mic.
Good evening.
Good evening. How you doing?
Hi. I'm here from Hightower Moore Temple with my leaders Pastor Randolph Dwayne Scott, my first lady is Tina Scott, and I'm here to do the prayer tonight, and I'm a little bit nervous, but we're gonna get through it.
Amen.
How about that? But so our hearts and minds clear, as I pray, I get everybody if it's okay to stand.
Yes, ma'am. We can do that.
Father God, we come before you, humble ourselves the best way we know how, that God you lean on us tonight, that you teach us and lead us how to be as one, to gather, to gather your peoples in this great city, God, that you have placed great means and women's in this city to reach your people, to be a blessing to this city, God, that you will give the glory, because where the glory is not there, God, you is not there. And we need your glory in this city, God. We need your power in this city, God, that you rest and rule on each and one of us, God, that you will bless us, that we will put our hands together, and we will hold each other up in prayer, that we will run together as one, that we can be one united together, oh God. If you could do these things for God, we are rich as blessed, we'll call on your name, oh God, because we need a guidance from you. And I want to give thanks to every commission that works so hard, that make sure the city of Douglas being safe, to every officer that lose sleep at night for this city, God, continue to bless their family, continue to shine on them, God, give them strength to lean on one another, to pray for one another, and if you do these things, God, we'll give you the praise and honor, and every heart say amen.
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 Outstanding. Thank you. Yes, let's remain standing, and this time we will have our pledge of allegiance. As always, we will be led by the Coffee County Navy Junior ROTC, and with us tonight is Commander McKeegan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Outstanding. You may be seated. Next on the agenda, you will see that the minutes are there, but we've already placed those on the consent agenda, so we will strike item number four, and the next item on the agenda would be approval of the order of the agenda.
So moved.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have recognition of the newly certified firefighter, future spark.
The first lesson is don't let the mayor drive the truck.
Please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Several months ago, Chief Wilson sent me after him and told me to look and find a good fireman, we needed one. So I didn't find one, so I went to Ambrose and I got Will Thompson. But no, no, Will, honestly, I've known Will since he was a young'un. Will was a good, good kid. He played football with the Trojans, he's former Trojan. He, uh, he, the hiring process for the fire department, as you know, is long, and it's hard. He took a written test, physical test, and then had two or three interviews they had to go on, and then he had to go to school for eight weeks, and stayed up there in them dorm rooms, it's like sleeping on that floor. So he just got back, and we, we're glad to have him, we're proud to have him, and if he just quit calling me Mr. Rex, I ain't got used to that yet.
Outstanding. So, what we have here? Certificate? Going to read it?
Yes.
Okay. Joint Performance Training Center, this is the certificate that William Thompson has successfully completed three hundred and forty-five hour course of study. I didn't realize it was that long. Three hundred and forty-five hours of study, entitled Basic Firefighter, and witness thereof the seal of the state of Georgia, and the signatures of duly authorized officers of fix given on May, correct, the fourth day of May, two thousand and eighteen. Congratulations. Outstanding. And there's no kidding, Tony Thompson. Now, you're gonna be sparking. I can't hear you. Would you understand that? Just tell them to keep plenty of water. Okay, 'cause you can't take that, you can't take that off. They take it off, 'cause the kids, we go, oh no! We're good? Congratulations. Always remember, it's a team effort. Right? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
And don't let the mayor drive the fire truck.
Thanks, Rex.
Next on the agenda, we have recognition of volunteers of the Great American Cleanup.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We're gonna also, Mike Huston, Douglas Utilities, going to assist us, as he works closely with Public Works Department, ESG, and we're gonna ask Commissioner Galwin if he would come down as well. On Saturday, April the twenty-eighth, ESG Operations, along with some community volunteers, South Georgia State College participated in the City of Douglas Promotion, Georgia Cities Week, which included the Great American Cleanup. Volunteers helped to clean up areas along South Gaskin Avenue and Pine Crest Drive, bagging over twenty bags of trash and other large items. Afterwards, ESG Operations and South Georgia State College were very kind to provide volunteers with a light lunch. The Great American Cleanup organizes millions of volunteers in local, locally-directed activities that encourages individuals' stewardship for the environment and care for the community, efforts in litter prevention and removal of waste reductions, recycling beautification, and community greening results in cleaner, greener, safer, and more beautiful public spaces. So we're here tonight to recognize the students of South Georgia State College, along with some other volunteers, that includes some adults. So we're gonna call them in, and the first one is Jalen, I'm sorry, Kaylin Wilkerson. Yes, if you would. And if everybody will stay up for a group picture, please. At this time, we're gonna ask Mayor Palk to read one of the certificates, so we'll know what's being presented tonight.
Outstanding. Certificate of recognition is going to be presented to these fine young adults, and it reads as follows: For participating in the Great American Cleanup, which was held in Douglas, Georgia on Saturday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen, as an effort to make Douglas neighborhoods and public spaces a safe, more enjoyable place to live, work, and play. And the participants, City of Douglas, Keep America Beautiful, Great American Cleanup, South Georgia State College, and ESG Operations. Outstanding.
Right. The next one is George Morales. I don't know if Megan Harold came in, I'm gonna call her name, okay? Maya Fossil. Cindy Dalton could not be here tonight, but coming to accept her certificate is Dr. Yuna Chin, who is the professor of economics, and she helped to co-chair the community effort on behalf of South Georgia State College. Juana Avarado. Yeah, we're gonna need two lines before it's over. And Ms. Bobby Hancock, who was one of the lead organizers for South Georgia State College, she couldn't be here tonight, but Ms. Walter Kite, she is here representing the college, and she is going to accept their certificate tonight. Along with Dr. Pace, and also none other than Kevin Davis is coming on behalf of ESG.
Oh, we always see them.
Well, we have to thank them, because we do appreciate their community involvement as well. Now, I'm gonna switch from the microphone and go over here to get this picture, but I can tell y'all, we're gonna need two lines, so the shorter one's gonna have to come up front.
You should. You should, uh, you should, uh, Kevin. Kevin, you should.
She's trying to tiptoe. You may have to come up. Okay. That may work. Mr. Morris, you have said that right there.
He's still growing.
Mike, you've...
There's three of them.
All right. Everyone, hold big cheese. One more for safety. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Our volunteers for the Great American Cleanup, as you see, it was a mixture of individuals of the City of Douglas, and it's always satisfying when our citizens take ownership of the city, wanting to make sure that the neighborhoods are clean and safe, and it just goes to what I have tried to express since I've been in office this time. Our youth are willing to engage and get involved in this community, and it's always good to see our youth out doing positive things. Sometimes they're miscategorized and lumped together, they're, they're still growing, they're still young, we all made mistakes, but let's at least give them an opportunity to grow and be productive citizens. And once again, the volunteers of the Great American Cleanup are shining example of the citizens of Douglas, always shining bright. Next on the agenda will be the second reading of the revision of the motorized car ordinance. At this time, our city attorney, Mr. Jerome Adams, how you doing?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor, how are you?
Doing well.
Okay, this is the second reading, and this will be ready for action when I conclude the reading. Be it ordained by the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, in regular meeting and assembly in pursuit of lawful authority thereof, the tract provisions of City of Douglas, Georgia, hereby amended and stands amended by adding the following: Children under the age of four years old are prohibited from riding as a passenger on a golf cart. Children four years of age until they reach eight years of age must be properly restrained in a child passenger restraint system approved by statute. A child passenger restraining system shall be provided in all passenger vehicles. Seat belts shall be properly used for all persons between the age of eight and seventeen years of age, while the motorized cart is in motion, often ready for the first time in the regular meeting, the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, on April twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, and will be ready for the second time passed ordained at the regular meeting of the Mayor and City Commissioners on May the seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and this is ready for action.
Outstanding. I entertain a motion.
Motion carries.
So moved. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
I'm opposed, Mayor, at the reading as it's worded.
Okay.
I had entertained the, the actual, or had requested that it be reworded and redone, but I understand that everybody's in favor of it as is, so I'd just like to stand as opposed.
Outstanding. Next on the agenda are the items placed on the consent agenda. As always, our city manager will list those, will read those items to make the citizens aware. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. First item is the minutes for the April the twenty-second, twenty-third, excuse me, two thousand and eighteen meeting, and the next item is the purchase of one new Ford F-150 truck for the gas department. Next item is the re, uh, re, uh, ratification of the bid award of the EIP grant for the street drainage and water improvements. Next item is the temporary approval for the air evac to use Pylon Aviation hangar. Next item is the approval of the MEAG amendments to the power sale contract, and the last item is the ratification of fee waiver requests by the Coffee County NAACP. Those are all items, Mayor.
Outstanding. I'll entertain a motion for those items.
Second to motion.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we do have a couple items from the work session brought forward for discussion. Mr. City Manager.
First item is the repeal and replace of the solar panel ordinance in relationship to some of the changes in the legislation. Jerome Adams will read those in regards to the first reading.
Okay, this is the first reading of the solar panel ordinance, it's a revision of that ordinance, and this will be an ordinance to amend the Unified Land Development Code of City of Douglas, Georgia by deleting Chapter thirteen, Section one to seven, designated permissible uses of solar electrical systems to repeal all ordinances in conflict here with and for an effective date for other purposes. Be it ordained by the Mayor and Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, in regular meeting and assembly in pursuit of lawful authority thereof, the Unified Development Code of the City of Douglas, Georgia is amended and stands amended as follows. This is very lengthy, so I won't go into detail and read it, but basically what it provides is it allows solar panel providers to place solar panels in locations that they were not able to place them in, under the old ordinance. They can place them on the roof, sometimes in the front yard, but they gotta have some kind of screen to block the view up and from the street. And you'll have the second reading of this ordinance on March, I mean, May the thirty-first.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Okay. The next item, Mayor, is the Retirement Plan Amendment Ordinance Changes. Once again, Jerome Adams will read that first in regards to consideration.
And this one is over fifty-something pages, so I don't think you want me to sit here and read all that, but anyway, this will be an ordinance to amend and restate the retirement plan for the employees of the City of Douglas, Georgia, in accordance with the seventy terms and conditions set forth in the attached adoption agreement. Any addendum of the adoption agreement, the Georgia Municipal Electric Employees Benefit System, Master Plan Document, and the Jimbers Trust Agreement, when accepted by the authorized officers of the city in Jimbers, the following shall constitute a contract between the city and Jimbers, all as authorized and provided by OCGA forty-seven dash five dash one. Be it ordained by the Mayor and Council of the City of Douglas, Georgia, and here ordained as, uh, authority of the same, and what this provides is, is it will update the pension committee's secretary designation to be the human resource manager. It'll clarify that a participant must be in service with the city when he or she meets the requirements for Rule ninety in order to qualify, to update pre-retirement death benefit provisions, to eliminate the age twenty-five cutoff applicable to children designated as secondary pre-retirement death beneficiaries, provided payments to a primary or secondary pre-retirement beneficiary will cease upon the death of such beneficiary, and to also clarify the provisions related to payment of in-service pre-retirement death benefits to multiple children designated as secondary pre-retirement beneficiaries, also apply with respect to payment of terminated vested pre-retirement death benefits to implement applicable terms in the settlement agreement between the City of Douglas, Georgia, and Mr. Gary Castellos. And we'll have the second reading of this on May the thirty-first.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have staff comments.
All right, wanna share some announcements. The Summer Beach Bash is coming up on June the fifth, not too far away now. It's gonna be located on the vacant lot here next to City Hall from four to eight p.m. This is a Main Street sponsored event, great summertime beach party for the entire community. Just want everyone to know we are still accepting vendors, resource vendors, those who would like to come out and set up a booth and have some fun with us. It's a great opportunity for churches and other civic groups, and even businesses who have programs that cater to kids, who offer summer camps, vacation Bible schools to come and get a booth, and to get some kids signed up for summer programs. The Douglas Fire Department will begin testing hydrants on Monday, May the twenty-first, and will continue through Friday, May the twenty-fifth. Hydrant testing will be in the northeast area of the city. Testing during this time will begin each day at nine p.m. and continue through the night, continuing to four a.m. each morning, so y'all are gonna be very, very busy. And we just want to remind individuals, during the testing period, if you notice that the water is cloudy, or whatever, let it run awhile to remove the cloudiness and the rust debris that may be in the water line, so that it won't damage, contaminate any food or damage your laundry. For more questions, you can call the Fire Department, three eight four four eight one five, and they'll answer your questions about it. Our next residential drop, jump, drop-off is coming up on June the second. These are monthly drop-offs that we have for residents to clean up around their homes. They are held each month, and as I said, the next one is June the second, from eight to twelve. We are seeking volunteers for the City of Douglas Teen Court. There's a few requirements that are required. Must be in the sixth through the twelfth grade, must have a mature spirit about yourself, willing to, must be willing to make a difference in the community. Applications are due by June the first. If you would like to sign up, please contact our Office of City Clerk, this one at Boulder here at City Hall, or give the three-one-one Customer Care Center a call. We, of course, year-round take applications for the City of Douglas Police Officers, and we have a job opening as a maintenance facility worker in the Parks and Recreation Department. That job is posted through May the twenty-fifth. And the last announcement is that the Parks and Recreation Office held registration, I guess the other week, for summer programs, there's still some openings, so if you looking for something to get your kids involved with this summer, please go by the Parks and Recreation Department, find out what's the programs they have available for your kids to sign up, or visit the website, cityofdouglas.com, or give them a call, three eight four five nine seven eight. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you. Next...
I'm sorry, we got one more announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to announce to everyone that there'll be a youth council, Mayor's Youth Council meeting on Thursday, May seventeenth, at six p.m., and everyone is invited to attend.
Thank you. Next on the agenda will be the Mayor and Commissioner's comment. Let's start off with Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I don't have much this afternoon. I'm just looking at the news and just thank the Lord for the city of Douglas with the volcano that's out in, I think it's out in Hawaii, you know, with the fire and all. Let's keep those peoples in our prayers, because can you imagine, you know, fire just popping out of the ground, and the ground is hard and everything, and, and, you know, as I looked at it on TV, I just began to pray for them, because that is unimaginable, you know, and all. But, um, as we on our daily prayers, you know, just keep them in prayer, and I don't have that much left at this time.
Outstanding. Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to congratulate the people on the Great American Cleanup that they did, that was a terrific presentation, we thank them for it. We want to remember, early voting is through this week, and be sure to vote for SPOLOST, T-SPOLOST. This will help pave streets, and I noticed the Boyd Mill Road's been repaved, but we got a lot on the list that this money will go to and designated for certain areas, and we encourage you to go vote, and you can vote early, and, but early voting ends Friday.
Yes, eighteen.
And thank you for voting.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Commissioner Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I apologize for being late today, I'm really under the weather. Just before I begin my comments, I just want to ask the, uh, city attorney, so that regarding the retirement plan, that was the first reading, and we'll, we'll vote on it on next meeting?
That's correct.
All right, because I do have some concerns pertaining to that. I'd just like to say as well as Commissioner Moore just stated about to make sure that you do go to vote, early voting ends May the eighteen, which is this Friday, and then regular day vote is May twenty-second. That's the last day to be able to vote, so please go out and vote. We want folks to vote for our T-SPOLOST, exercise your right to vote. A lot of sacrifices have been made for people to be able to vote, so I just want to encourage you all to do so. Lastly, I'd just like to say that Coffee County NAA was able to celebrate its twenty-sixth annual freedom following banquet on this past Saturday evening. State Representative Al Williams was our keynote speaker. We had a very, very delightful evening, we gave some very good points. My attorneys from the Southern Center for Human Rights were present, they gave some very interesting points of the plan that we can get it aired on Channel thirteen, where people who did not attend could see it. If not Channel thirteen, maybe we can get it on YouTube. Hope everybody had, all the ladies had a happy Mother's Day. I think that's all that I have right now. Mr. Mayor?
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I, again, would like to, as Commissioner Pearson noted, wish everyone, or say, rather, I hope everyone had a, all the ladies had a nice Mother's Day yesterday. I know I did. Please be in prayer for my mother, I'm going through a difficult time right now with her, and I just covet your prayers in this, at this time, in this season of her life. But I want to say, you know, on a, on a, we've had a lot of sweet Mother's Days, and a lot, we've celebrated a lot of things together, so a lot to be thankful for also. I want to say, again, I can appreciate what Commissioner Moore said, when you follow some of these, you can just sort of reiterate, but the voting is very important in Douglas and Coffee County, and especially for the T-SPOLOST. That money is, is put to good use, and is a fairest way to, to assess everyone for, you know, the utilization of these funds and everything. It's a great, great way to use that. I think the other thing I want to say, congratulations, we've had some ribbon cuttings in Douglas, and due to some other things, I've not been able to attend all of them, but I know we had Gigi's Gelatos, and maybe some others that I, that I wouldn't remember, but I commend Ginger on that, opening that business, and look forward to, to working with her in any way in the city. And I guess, Mayor, that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Dave.
Outstanding. Mayor Prochey?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Like they said, to piggyback on what they said about the voting, please go out and vote, I mean, by the eighteenth, make sure you vote on that date. On the twenty-second, it is, it is very important since that we all go out and vote, and also we want to encourage all the youth marriage, about the Youth Marriage Council meeting this Thursday, the seventeenth, want everybody to come out, and commissioners, don't forget to check in with your junior commissioners, please, and, you know, to check on them, you know, throughout the park. And also, my, my thoughts and prayers are out to all the bereaved families that are experiencing death, I mean, it's heavy and heavy, and also we have a city employee that lost his sister, and Tommy, as well as Tommy Harold with his father. And also, I would like to just, my ass go out to my brother Anton Diaz Carter in Jacksonville, Florida, there was a young... There was a young girl that was finna be abducted and kidnapped. Um, she was getting off the scoop bus and a man was trying to kidnap her, and she was running in the middle of traffic in Jacksonville, and she was hollering for help, but people wouldn't stop, and he liked to hit the girl, and he stopped, and when he stopped, he got out the car, and he, he saved her from getting kidnapped, and that's all on the news in Jacksonville and everything. I shared it on Facebook, but, um, that's my hero.
That's great.
And that's my brother, so I, you know, try to push, you know, because you just don't know how many people are being, I mean, abducted and kidnapped in, in the United States today, even a, a trade on women, you know? And that could have went in a, you know, an accident like that, but thank God that he gave him the power, those Navy skills came out, you know? Uh, yes, he's in the Navy. Anyway, um.
Sorry, Mayor. I want to separate them. I know why y'all have me between these two, okay?
But that's also I have, and, uh, we asked that all citizens, please stay, and I want to address this with all citizens of the City of Douglas, it is getting hot. Please cut your yards. Please trim your trees. Beautify your property, because, I mean, all that grass and all that stuff, you don't want snakes, you don't want this, you know, so, so, you know, do what you gotta do to beautify your properties, because it's getting hot, and when it's, everything get to crawling, you know? You know, and stuff like that, and that's all I have to say.
And we're thankful, we're thankful for the rain, too, aren't we? The upcoming rain.
Supposed to rain every day this week.
We're believing in the rain, and farmers are.
I don't need it to be raining.
Farmers are mighty excited, I know. They're excited.
I don't need it to be raining. But that's all I have.
Commissioner, uh, Galvin?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Again, I hope every, all the mothers had a, uh, enjoy Mother's Day and able to spend some time with their children. I know my wife got to enjoy her Mother's Day. She got to talk to her oldest baby out there in Idaho. That was a good time. Um, there is a, uh, a quote that's been one of my favorites, and I believe it to be the truth, that said, "Motherhood is near to divinity. It is the highest, holiest service to be assumed by mankind. It places her who honors its holy calling and serves next to the angels." Um, I truly believe that. Um, as y'all noticed tonight, we had several of these young women that were involved in the service projects that came forward. Uh, just a little bit of an insight on, on them, they're part of our Young Women's Group at church, and one thing that they work on, they have a, a program called Personal Progress, and it's divided up into different values they work on, so one of the values that they, uh, are learning about and they work on is called Good Works, and so this was a way for them to fulfill some of the requirements on that and the experience getting out there and helping with the community, so I commend them. I appreciate them, appreciate Amy Wilkerson, who works with our Young Women at church, and it's also, uh, the registrar at South Georgia State College for the work that she's doing, and encouraging them. And, uh, I hope, you know, one day, uh, they'll be the kind of mothers that we need in our community, because there's nothing more important to me in, in, that I could think of that we could have, is stronger families led by, um, strong, loving, caring mothers. That makes a difference in our homes and in our community. Um, on a lighter note, just looking, updating us on our, our sports report, uh, I think a lot of times, I don't know why, but, uh, our sports out of South Georgia State College sometimes don't get as much publicity, uh, as I think they should. It was reported in Douglas Now that, uh, our baseball team out here had a very successful season. They won forty-two games, the highest in their, uh, conference. Has the best record in there. Their coach got Coach of the Year, they have one of their players, one of their pitchers got Player of the Year. They put six players on the all-conference team. Unfortunately, they fell a little bit short, uh, in their, uh, in the season tournament, so they're not gonna be able to advance to the National Junior College World Series, but we commend our, our, uh, South Georgia State College Hawks baseball team for their hard work and, and the effort they put into. Um, also, wasn't able to make it tonight because of this meeting, but our middle school was having a banquet for the tennis teams. Our boys team won their, uh, I think they call it a conference, it's not a region, the, the way that it got at middle school, but they, for the third year in a row, they won. Uh, congratulations to all these young men for the success they've had. Our girls team finished up second there. Um, our tennis team overall at Coffee High is doing very well. We've got a new coach out there that's, that's, uh, hearing good things about. Uh, of course, meaning you probably know our Lady Dog softball team up in Athens finished the season forty-three and eleven, number two in the SEC. They fell a little bit short in the postseason tournament, but they are finishing up ranked number nine in the country, and will be hosting a regional playoff, so they'll be going for the world, for the, uh, Women's World Series. The Bulldog baseball team is now tied for third in the SEC. Everybody knows Keegan McGovern, that played at Coffee County, is having an excellent season up there for them. They're thirty-five and sixteen, and if they do well to end up this week, they'll, they can potentially end up at least second in the SEC, so we wish them well. Um, I checked the standings to see where Georgia Tech was, but I, unfortunately, I didn't see them anywhere, Mr. Moore.
Oh.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Oh, that was painful. Well, uh, staying, staying in line with sports, uh, I believe, uh, the majority of the citizens know that, uh, Mr. Taylor Wilkinson was picked up by the Texans.
Oh, yes.
NFL team, and also a young man that used to stay here, uh, Kendra Street son, I'm gonna call him Mr. Street, he was also drafted by the San Francisco Forty-Niners.
All right.
So, uh, hopefully those guys will get in, uh, camp and put out everything and get on the field and listen for him to say, "From the great city of Douglas, Georgia and Coffee County." Uh, Kent Park and Miris Park, okay? What's her, what's her first name? Huh? Levette. Levette Wilkinson, Vet in Kent. So, uh, big congratulations for those guys. I'm a, I'm a Falcon fan. I'm a Falcon fan now, but Mr. Wilkinson, I want you to do well. Mr. Street, I want you to do well, but not do good, they hurt my Falcons now. They hurt my Falcons.
Oh, I have mercy.
So, uh, the T-Splot, everybody's talking about the T-Splot. The T-Splot is a, a regional effort to help us out with transportation. Everybody's referred to as the T-Splot. This is a transportation issue or, or effort to try to give us some funds to maybe, uh, as Mr. Moore said, pave a few roads, do a little this, do a little that, things that are pertaining to, uh, transportation. And a, and a bigger impact that I see as the Mayor of the City of Douglas, some of the funds that we're now using, uh, to do certain things, we could substitute funds from the T-Splot, which gives us a, a little bit more revenue in the City of Douglas. So, not only will the citizens of Douglas benefit as far as the T-Splot, as far as transportation, but in another aspect, so it's twofold, that we'll be able to enjoy some type of reprieve as far as our annual budget. The next thing is Mother's Day, Mother's Day, Mother's Day. I try to tell all the guys, Mother's Day is always first. Father's Day is coming up. Now, if you did well on Father's Day, on Mother's Day, you're gonna have a great Father's Day. Now, if you went through the drive-through in order number three, you're in trouble. So, I know that, uh, everybody did well, I expect Brian to get something.
Absolutely.
Yeah?
Absolutely. Our boys, our boys will step up to the plate, I'm sure.
Oh, the boy.
He has two wonderful sons. I'm teasing. I'm teasing.
I gotta call Brian?
I'll buy him something, Mayor. They came through for me.
They came through.
They came through. They surprised me, they were sitting in church Sunday morning and surprised Mama, walked out of Sunday School, and there was my two boys sitting there.
Outstanding.
Came all the way from Vodkostas.
And that was a perfect segue.
That was great.
You know, uh.
And they'll do that for their daddy.
Commissioner Galvin, you know, uh, throughout our tenure here, uh, your church has come here numerous times.
Numerous.
Out there in the community doing great works. How do we end up with you?
Camp under.
Just blessed.
Oh, but let me say this right here in my closing remarks, it's summertime. In the summertime, it's getting hot. Please, please be mindful when you're out around the water, jet skiing, swimming, boating, fishing, things of this nature here.
Things of this nature.
Make sure that your grass is cut and all this or that, but I want you to have an enjoyable time, and to the parents.
And safe.
I want you to be safe, but I also want you to take some time out with your children. So many times, individuals, parents get wrapped up into, "What can I do for my child? Can I, can I purchase this, or can I send them here, or can I send them there?" I'll tell you like this, right, I've been a parent come May, the end of this month, for thirty years. The biggest thing that you can give a child is your time. That's the biggest thing you can give your child. A guy once told me, "I can tell you what a person is interested in, see where they spend their time and where they spend their money." Those are the things that are important to them. And the thing that I like is, my oldest daughter will be thirty this, this month, and we still talk about things that we done when she was five and six. Those are the things that you want to be able to create. Summertime, take some vacation. It doesn't have to be, uh, a big vacation, you can go to Broxton Rocks. You can go anywhere in the City of Douglas, because it is not, it is not that necessarily that venue. It is not that, it's the opportunity to spend time with your family, to talk about things.
That's true.
And to get a clear understanding, and I tell folks this all the time, and y'all know y'all not gonna believe this, but I'm the favorite parent. I'm the favorite parent, and you can call my wife and she'll tell you, because one of my, one of my chief objectives as a father is, you know, they always say a child needs tough love. One of the judges say, "Don't, tough love is fine, but don't forget that love part."
That's right.
So many times, we forget that love part, and so many times, our youth don't get the opportunity to, to grow up a little bit, to make mistakes, and spend some time with your children. God knows that you will reap the benefits for the rest of your life. And as always, I'd like to thank everybody, uh, my commission up here, Commissioner Pearson, Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner McNeil, the Mayor Pro temp, and Commissioner Galvin. It is a pleasure to sit up here with you and serve, you know, thank y'all. I really appreciate, and I'm grateful.
Thank you, Mayor.
To be working up here with y'all.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
We do have an executive session. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into.
Before you, uh, entertain the motion, I just wanted to mention right quick, I think it's important, you know, we mentioned about voting, but, um, there are some questions on that ballot, and honestly, I did not know, uh, what the phrase bump, bump stop?
Bump stop.
Meant, so I researched it, and I found out that that's where you make a weapon to become an automatic.
Automatic.
Or something like that, so I just want to urge our citizens.
Very close.
Um, now, I, I, you know, it say, "Shall they be prevented in Georgia?", and I think they should, not telling anybody how to vote, but I don't think we need to do anything to make guns or weapons or whatever that add to more dangerous, that would make that weapon or become an automatic or like a machine gun or whatever. So, when you all go out to vote, please, 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 before you answer those questions or don't answer those questions, try to find out and look up to see what those questions mean, so you can answer them, because it's very important how we vote. So, I voted yes, it should be prohibited, because we don't need any more dangerous guns than what they are, as well as I think the last question on the ballot might be the one about the T-Splot, so that's yes, but I just thought I would add that, because some people don't find out what those things mean, they just either vote.
Choose yes or no randomly.
Or they don't choose anything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Outstanding. At this time, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So, move.
Second.
It's been motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are now in the executive session. Will take a few minutes to give everybody the opportunity to clear out.